Welcome to the July 8th meeting of the MCCSC Board of School Trustees. We ask that you please come to order. Tonight, we will begin with public comments. Thank you to all who signed up and acknowledge the guidelines to speak. Tonight, we have just one person, Jenny Noble Cuchera, so feel free to come up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Noble Cuchera. Thank you so much for welcoming my public comment tonight. I hope everyone is having a nice summer. I am the president and speaking in such capacity of the Monroe County Education Association tonight. I am here because we have a lot of transitions this summer and into this school year. So I wanted to make an official invitation to our administrators and our school board members that the Monroe County Education Association is hosting a safety summit on Monday, July 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. You've all, at this point, hopefully received an invitation in your emails. I'm gonna leave a QR code with Karen up here in case you'd like to scan it and RSVP. The purpose of the summit is to examine collectively a lot of the transitions that are teacher concerns amongst my members when it comes to ensuring that we have streamlined and effective processes going into next school year to make sure that across the district, everything is being consistently dealt with when it comes to especially student and also adult safety, given the fact that we are, we have a decrease in our adults in all buildings. So I hope you accept our invitation and I hope to see you on the 21st. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you so much. My apologies, we do actually have one more public comment tonight. We have Christopher MG, is it MG? Okay.
Yep.
Good evening, all. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and our foundation, Weaning the Success School. I want to thank, first of all, the MCCSC Board, the educators and administrators for your partnership and unwavering support with the chamber. The chamber is long been a strong advocate of public K-12 education. We remain so even in the face of increasing hostility at the State House. The business community deeply understands the strong public schools are essential to long-term workforce development and economic prosperity. We want to bring people into this community and the first thing they ask is, how are the schools? And we can thankfully report they are great. We cannot grow a healthy economy without a well-educated and prepared next generation. So the Success School is the K-12 career and financial readiness arm of the chamber. In the past year alone, we had forty-four hundred students, or forty-four hundred students in programs like the Reality Store, career panels, job shadowing that we did. These opportunities were made possible by the great collaboration between us and MCCSC. We honor our educators as well. So they work hard and they inspire every day. Students gaining confidence, building skills, discovering future career path. That's why the chamber proudly presents the Educator of the Year Awards now in our 24th year to recognize outstanding MCCSC teachers, administrators, and support staff. This nomination is now open until July 28th. So anyone, parent, teacher, fellow staff, anybody can nominate an educator who goes above and beyond. This nomination form is simple and it's available at our chamberbloomington.org, a nomination backslash. I'm gonna leave a few of these cards here with Karen, but they're also on the front, so I hopefully will take that. But MCCSC is full of great educators and who deserve recognition. At our event, we're gonna be having over 500 community members and business leaders there at our annual meeting. That will be held Thursday, September 12th, at the newly-named Bloomington Convention Center. That is an evening event. It's a powerful way to shine a spotlight on a well-deserved educator shaping Bloomington's future. So I thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We will now move to our consent agenda, which includes the following. The minutes from the board meeting held on May 20th, 2025. Our ECA expenditures, our financial report from May 2025, the appropriation balance report from May, register of claims from June 24, 2025, payroll register and register of claims, May 2025, student orientation and support guides changes for... Student orientation and support guides changes, I think. Just changes. Okay, cool. The student athletic handbook changes and the request to declare a surplus and authorized disposal of out-of-date items. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Aaron Cooperman and seconded by Tiana that we approve the consent agenda as presented. And our two loudest and fastest to typically motion are out of office today, so. It was a change, I think, for everybody. We were like, wait a minute. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Next, for our consideration are the donations. We have received donations of over $3,000 and as always, we're grateful to our donors. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. Do I have a motion to accept the donations? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Aaron Wyatt and seconded by Tiana that we accept the donations as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve the donations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? No? Any abstentions? It passes. Next, we move to the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Aaron Cooperman and seconded by Aaron Wyatt that we approve the personnel report as presented. Dr. Henderson.
President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees, this evening, I'd like to call to your attention the following administrative appointments, changes of status, and retirements. Jennifer Campbell, Administrator, Assistant Principal, Tri-North Middle School. Ms. Campbell continues with MCCSC after serving as a teacher of mathematics and science at Tri-North Middle School starting in 2021. She earned her bachelor's and master's degrees from Wright State University in Dayton, Ohio, and her master's in educational leadership from IU Bloomington. Prior to joining MCCSC in 2021, Ms. Campbell taught in Ohio, Louisiana, and Pennsylvania, and worked in research at Mississippi State University. Brett Cooper, Administrator, Assistant Athletic Director, Head Football Coach, and Business Teacher. Mr. Cooper joins MCCSC after most recently serving as Head Football Coach and Strength Coach at Perry Meridian High School. Additionally, he served as Head Coach at Indian Creek High School and filled various assistant coaching roles at Warren Central, University of Indianapolis, Princeton High School, LaSalle High School, and Maslin High School, all in Ohio. He will serve as Head Football Coach, Assistant Athletic Director, and Business Teacher at BHSN. Matthew Irwin, Administrator, Chief Financial Officer, and School Corporation Treasurer. Mr. Irwin joins MCCSC after serving as the Assistant Superintendent and Business Manager of the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation. Mr. Irwin earned his bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Indianapolis, a master's degree in business administration and educational leadership, as well as his EDS degree from Indiana State University. Additionally, Mr. Irwin earned his Chief Business Officer Certification from IASBO. He has prior experience as a classroom teacher, guidance counselor, assistant principal, athletic director, and student services coordinator for Beach Grove City Schools. As you can see, Mr. Irwin has a wide range of experiences serving students and communities, and brings with him a wealth of knowledge as he steps into the role of Chief Financial Officer and School Corporation Treasurer with MCCSC. Samantha Lantis, Administrator, Principal, University Elementary School. Ms. Lantis continues with MCCSC after serving as Assistant Principal at Templeton Elementary School since 2023. Prior to joining MCCSC, Ms. Lantis served as Principal of Stewart Elementary School in Stevensville, Michigan, from 2018 to 2023. Ms. Lantis earned her bachelor's degree from Ball State University in Elementary Education and her master's in school administration from Indiana Wesleyan University. I was remiss in not acknowledging Dr. Sue Lanham's resignation from MCCSC at last month's board meeting, and so want to take a moment to acknowledge her time as serving as the principal at Lakeview Elementary for the last three years. And we want to wish her well in her new role as Superintendent at Shoals Community School Corporation. Our certified staff retirements include Maureen Davidoff. Ms. Davidoff has been with MCCSC for 24 years, most recently serving as a science teacher at Bachelor Middle School. Rita Knox. Ms. Knox has been with MCCSC for 23 years, most recently serving as a science teacher at Jackson Creek Middle School. Jeffrey Rudkin. Mr. Rudkin has been with MCCSC for 33 years, most recently serving as the video production teacher at Bachelor Middle School. Our support staff retirements include Richard Schatz, Academic Lab and Detention Aid at the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship, and he has been with MCCSC for 13 years. Kimberly Uland. Ms. Uland has been with MCCSC for 13 years, most recently serving as a School Age Care Program Assistant Manager at the Educational Resource Center. Altogether, the retirees presented this evening represent a combined total of 106 years of service to our school community. On behalf of MCCSC, I would like to extend a special thank you to all these individuals for their many years of dedicated service and wish them well in their next adventures. At this time, I request that you please approve the recommendations as presented in your board packet in the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson, and...
After approval.
Thank you so much, Dr. Henderson, and we do appreciate all those who've served and have now officially moved on from MCCSC. All those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Are there any abstentions? The motion carries. Dr. Henderson, would you like to introduce some people?
Yes, finally, I would like to take the time to invite three individuals up to the podium this evening to address the board. We'll start this evening with Brett Cooper, Head Football Coach, Assistant Athletic Director and Business Teacher at Bloomington High School North. Mr. Cooper?
Good evening. First of all, we are extremely excited to be part of MCCSC community. My family and I are blessed to be, to have this opportunity. I want to say a couple of thank yous here to the Board of Trustees, Dr. Winston, Dr. Henderson, Mrs. Harmon, for this opportunity and entrusting the North staff to make a difficult decision in a difficult time as a head football coach in transition late into school year. So greatly appreciate you guys. This crew sitting here allows me to do this. As you guys know, a football coach in today's world is a 365 job and you gotta have a supportive family. And my wife, Colleen, and daughter Audrey and son Brooks are all in and they love high school sports and what they mean to themselves as role models for them as kids and then what we can do as adults to set an example for them as well. Obviously, our athletic director, Andy Hotson, is here. He's part of the committee, so thank you, Andy. And then I think a group that will go unnoticed to a lot of people, but the guys that are on the football staff at Bloomington North that wrap their arms around a team in major adversity in late May, they need to be noticed and what they did embodies what high school sports is about. It's about the kids and that's the foundation of our football program will always be about the kids and helping them transition to whatever the next phase of life they have. And with that said, we are beyond excited to get active tomorrow. Note about this for a little bit, so we get to meet everybody tomorrow and the players on Thursdays, so thank you all again and go Cougars.
I was gonna say, you'll learn real quick how to say it's great to be a Cougar, so. All right, Mr. Henderson.
Next, I'd like to introduce Samantha Lantis, Principal at University Elementary School.
My little one has been in mommy mode lately, so I didn't know how that transition was gonna go. Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the School Board of Trustees. It's truly an honor to be named as the next principal at University Elementary School. I want to extend my sincere thanks to you as well as to our district leadership, including Dr. Winston, Dr. Henderson, Ms. Harmon, and a lot of the other administrative team that has been a part of this decision to support me and to continue to have confidence of me. It's been an honor to be a part of the MCCSC community so far as being the Assistant Principal at Templeton. And I just want to thank you again for offering me this opportunity to be a part of the university staff. University is a school with a vibrant and caring culture, thanks to the dedication of its staff, to the energy and the potential of its students, and to the partnership and support of its families. I'm looking forward to building strong relationships with each of these groups as we move forward. And I'm also looking forward to creating the best possible opportunities for our learners. I want to acknowledge Mr. Ben Jones, who is sitting right back here. He is gonna be my right-hand man as our new Assistant Principal, and I'm thankful that he is here joining us tonight. We're both so excited to join the university community and to work together in service of such an amazing group of people. And I can't wait to celebrate and share all of the great successes and uni pride that we will have moving forward. Thank you so much.
And last but not least, I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Irwin, Chief Financial Officer and School Corporation Treasurer, to the podium. Mr. Irwin?
President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, School Board Trustees, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to serve as the next CFO at a great school corporation. I'm extremely honored and excited to get busy in the work that needs to be done in serving a great school community. I started my career, as Dr. Henderson said, as a fifth-grade teacher and as a coach. And I got into education because the most influential people in my life were coaches, teachers, and people that were in education. I know that the position that I will serve in has a huge impact on the opportunities that kids have, and I don't take that lightly. I'm honored to serve with that. I will do everything I can to make sure that I continue to build upon the excellence that MCCSC does demonstrate on a year-in and year-out basis. I thank you for this opportunity and looking forward to working alongside all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're good? All right. Well, thank you to all of you who've joined MCCSC. We're really excited to see, you know, how you'll find your place here and to those of you moving into new roles, congratulations as well. Okay. And I will just say, I know that some of you who are here have little ones. If you would like to leave now before we do the rest of the meeting, please feel free. Not that you must, you're welcome to stay, but I just want to give you an exit opportunity? No? You're good? Okay, cool. All right. Next, for our consideration are the changes to the teacher evaluation model. Do I have a motion to approve the changes to the teacher evaluation model as presented? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Aaron Cooperman, seconded by Tiana, that we approve the changes to the teacher evaluation model as presented. Dr. Henderson.
President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, members of the Board of School Trustees, during previous board meetings, I've provided updates on the implementation of the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Effectiveness Framework as our evaluation model and Education Advance as the technology tool through which evaluations will be conducted and records will be maintained. We work collaboratively with the Evaluation Oversight Committee throughout this process and have provided regular updates through our MCEA discussion meetings. Modifications to our previous plan have been made to reflect the changes and are presented to you this evening for approval prior to our annual submission to the Indiana Department of Education. I recommend the board approve these changes.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Do we have any comments from the board on this topic? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the changes to the teacher evaluation model, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, for our consideration are the meal prices for 2025, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve the meal prices for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. It was moved by Aaron Cooperman and I actually heard second by age adjuster over here, so we're gonna go there. Feel like a auctioneer tonight. Dr. Henderson.
President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees, this evening I am presenting recommended meal price increases for the 2025, 2026 school year. These adjustments comply with federal regulations governing the USDA child nutrition programs and will ensure continued financial sustainability of our child nutrition program. Increase student breakfast prices by 10 cents. Increase student lunch prices by 10 cents. Increase preschool and after-school snack prices by 25 cents. Increase adult breakfast prices by 50 cents. And increase adult lunch prices by 50 cents. It's important to note that we will continue offering free breakfast and lunch at eligible community eligibility provisioned schools, which are Arlington, Bloomington Graduation School, Clear Creek, Fairview, Grandview, Highland Park, and Templeton. I request the board's approval of these revised meal prices for implementation in the 2025, 2026 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Do we have any comments from the board on this issue?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So why are other schools getting free lunch, free breakfast? Is it only certain, why is it...
Yes. Yeah, the community eligibility provision is something that you have to apply for. A school has to apply for it and it is based on certain criteria. And so whenever those schools meet that criteria, our food services person, Matt Tomroll, will go ahead and make that application on behalf of those schools. And so those are the schools that are currently eligible for that provision.
Thanks. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, good question. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion to approve the meal prices for 2025, 2026 school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Tonight, Dr. Winston will provide a presentation on the MCCSC online learning opportunities for 2025 and 2026. Dr. Winston?
Thank you, President Hennessy. Following the 2021 school year, we received numerous requests to provide robust online learning experiences for our students. Our principals' families have expressed a desire for us to provide this level of curriculum and they've contacted our curriculum office in that regard. As a result, as a result, our curriculum team began researching and evaluating a variety of online options and programs. Tonight, Dr. Tim Dowling will provide a detailed overview of our recommendation to open and offer a K-12 online program for the 25, 25, excuse me, 25, 26 school year. Dr. Dowling?
Good evening, Dr. Winston, President Hennessy, members of the Board of School Trustees. I'm gonna wait till I get the clicker so I can get in my, gotta get in the flow, right? As Dr. Winston mentioned, tonight I'll be talking about our online school option. First, I'd like to talk about why offer an online school? Why would we like to offer that option? First, we know there's a demand for virtual learning options. This is what we've heard from our community members and from our families. We also know that we have MCCSC area students who are already attending online schools elsewhere and we'd like to offer those students a local option. We also know that online learning can also offer flexibility for families, including support for mental health, travel, athletics, and medical needs. We also know we'd like to gain new students interested in online learning. This includes students who might be currently homeschooled or students from other school districts. Now, I'd like to talk about the partner we'd like to partner with for online learning. That's Edmentum. I'd like to talk about why we have chosen them as our partnership. We've done extensive research. We've looked at all available options and we've decided that Edmentum's Ed Options Academy would be the best choice for our students. They have proven success with other districts in the state. In fact, they're the largest provider of online learning in the state of Indiana. All of our students would be taught by Indiana-certified teachers. The program is K through 12. They offer College Board AP and they are NCAA-approved. They have flexible courses and enrollment. And we have an existing positive relationship with some programs we offer at the elementary, middle, and high school level. It's been a long time since 2020, since we first endeavored on online learning and there's been so much learned since that period. We know that these practices that we want in our online learning actually are very similar to the practices that we have at our in-person instruction. These practices include the importance of explicit instruction. We want to emphasize content clearly for students. We want to make sure we're scaffolding. We want to activate that prior knowledge and then build off of that. We want to make sure that we are teaching to mastery, that we know that students need multiple exposures to content and that will be included in our online program. We want to make sure that it's an active, engaging learning experience for our students. And we want to make sure that we really lean into those cognitive practices, making sure that we're promoting self-monitoring and reflection for students. Turning now to the specifics of what MCC online will look like for our school corporation, our host school will be the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship. The administrator of MCC online will be the administrator of the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship, Angie Evans. We, through the academy, will be able to offer support with course registration, answering parent questions, and the most... and the most, uh, most important piece, which is monitoring student success. This will be done through, you know, Angie Evans, as well as the staff, including the counselor and the social worker at the academy. A state requirement is that students do in-person testing, so that in-person testing for those state mandated tests will be done through coordination at the academy. We are proud to say that students who graduate from MCC online will have an MCCSC diploma. Turning now to the courses that will be offered, there will be over three hundred courses offered in K through 12, as, including, as I mentioned earlier, Advanced Placement. There will also be career and technical education courses offered as well. Students will have an option of both synchronous and asynchronous, or live or self-paced instruction. There is live demand, excuse me, there is live help available every day for students, should they like, should they want that. It includes both through, um, office hours of the teachers, but also they can put in requests to meet, uh, with staff, um, through EdMentum. Through our courses, we also make sure that we have accommodations for our IEPs, ILEPs, and 504s. We know the importance of those in-person contacts for online students, so we will be offering hybrid options for our high school students. These options may include courses, including band, chorus, uh, courses at Hoosier Hills. Uh, so they will have those in-person opportunities if that's something that meets, best meets their needs. We will have robust special education, English language learner, and mental health support through MCCSC staff, including with our partnership with Centerstone. And again, returning to those in-person experiences, we will be offering the option to participate in sports and clubs at our MCCSC schools for our online students. Returning to some additional supports offered by EdMentum. In addition to the support that, uh, online students receive from MCCSC staff, they will also have success coaching through EdMentum. This includes weekly check-ins. At these weekly check-ins, they'll make sure that students have the resources they need, including the support that they need for online learning. As I mentioned earlier, there is live instructional support. There are office hours, and students can request, um, to meet with their teachers and can, uh, request help sessions. There are also translation and text-to-speech services offered to support students through EdMentum. Just spending a few minutes now looking at a couple different, uh, example schedules, starting with high school. This is an example of a high school schedule. You can see the variety of courses that are offered. If you see an S there, that's synchronous. This is really just an example, those, there will be multiple opportunities for students to engage in synchronous instruction. This just gives an example of how many options a student might want to engage in. The recommendation from EdMentum is that students engage in at least two synchronous instruction sessions per week. They have data that shows that that really leads to increased success for students. LH there seems, uh, shows, uh, stands for live help. So you can see that a student has opportunities for synchronous instruction, live help, as well as the other supports I mentioned earlier. This is an example of a middle school schedule. Again, highlighting, uh, opportunities for synchronous instruction, live help. Uh, and including, and this does also highlight an example where students can have accelerated math, if that's the right option for them. Looking to an elementary schedule. There are four block classes that they would have, English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. I want to highlight that for the, at the elementary level, that they have synchronous, uh, instruction every day in these four core subjects, with Friday being set aside for individual meetings with teachers. They also have asynchronous instruction in art and PE. And you can see on this schedule and the other ones, there are additional supplemental supports, both in math and English Language Arts and success coaching. All these things are supplemental supports that'll be available to our students. Looking to next steps. We have an interest form, uh, available now on our website for families who would like to indicate interest in MCCSC online, or may just want to know, have some questions that they would like answered. As we go throughout this month of July, we'll continue providing more and more information about MCCSC online. As we get towards the end of July, we'll open up the application enrollment process. And then once those families complete that process, then they'll be able to start working on course selection. The first day of MCCSC online school will be the same as our in-person instruction, which would be August sixth. Finally, I'd like to conclude with some contact information. We have a webpage available with more information about MCCSC online, and we'll continue to add more content throughout the month. There's an email address that goes to several members of our team. So we'll make sure we're able to answer questions, whether it's about coursework or any other questions you have. Again, highlighting the principal of the MCCSC online will be Angie Evans, who is the principal of the, as I mentioned, the academy. There's also an email link there for support with enrollment. We want to make sure we're supporting families with enrollment. This goes for both MCCSC online, as well as any other enrollment questions that families might have. And finally, I've included the physical location of the academy. That's the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much. Do I have any questions or comments from the board? Uh, Dr. Dowling, those synchronous classes, uh, that the students will take, will those be, um, only MCCSC students? Or are they in a group with students from other school corporations as well?
EdMentum has told us it depends on our enrollment, but it could be either. It could be just MCCSC students, depending on our enrollment numbers, or it could be a mixture of other students throughout the, uh...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Um, I guess then, in that case, all those in favor of the motion to approve the MCCSC online school program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? I'm sorry. Did we make the motion earlier? Oh my lord. Y'all, we didn't even make a motion. Okay, this is what happens when you're still jet-lagged. Uh, do I have a motion, just kidding, to approve the MCCSC online school program as presented? Do I have a second? It's been moved by Erin Wyatt and seconded by Asia that we approve the MCCSC online program as presented. Um, Dr. Winston, do you have any other comments? Okay. Alrighty then. We're gonna redo that vote. So, all those in favor of the motion to approve the MCCSC online school program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Then the motion carries. We will now move to the contracts. Do we have a motion to approve the contracts as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by Aaron Cooperman and seconded by Erin Wyatt that we approve the contracts, one bid and two quotes as presented. Dr. Winston?
Thank you, President Hennessy. This evening you have before you fourteen contracts, one bid, and two quotes for your consideration and approval. I'd like to take a moment to highlight two of these contracts. The first is with EdMentum. First of all, thank you for approval of the MCCSC online school program. This contract will provide licensed online courses for students enrolled in that program. It also includes training for the staff who will facilitate the program, as well as support with registration, enrollment, monitoring, and support for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We're excited to offer this new option for our students and our families and our community, who are seeking and letting us know that they want a flexible, high-quality online learning experience for the students for whom they believe that's appropriate. The second contract that I want to bring your attention to is the Policy Analytics contract. This agreement is a direct response to Senate Enrolled Act One, SB One, and its potential financial impact, well, not potential, its intended financial impact on our district. Partnering with Policy Analytics will allow us to conduct in-depth analysis, parcel level of the legislation's fiscal implications and how that's going to impact us. And it will also support data-informed financial planning and future decision-making to assist us in sustaining excellence throughout our corporation for years to come. I so recommend approval of the fourteen contracts, one bid, and two quotes.
Um, do I have any comments from the board? Okay. And then, in that case, all those in favor of the motion to approve the contracts and award two bids, signify... It should be, all those in favor of the motion to approve the contracts, award one bid and two quotes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, we will have an update on the Redistricting Study Commission. Dr. Dowling?
Thank you again for this opportunity to provide an update on the Redistricting Study Commission. This will be an update of our last two meetings, from May and from June. First, as always, I like to start with our project charter. It really defines the scope of our work, including our goal and metrics and our expected deliverables. As I mentioned at the beginning, tonight I will focus on talking about, um, the commission meeting from May twenty-eighth, uh, which was our fourth meeting, as well as our fifth meeting, which was on June twenty-fifth, where we focused on evaluating redistricting scenarios, which I'll talk about now. However, first I'd like to really, um, point out, uh, again, the, what drives our work, which is the board priorities of balancing socioeconomic status and cost effectiveness. At the bottom of this slide, you can see the considerations. These come from, directly from the community, from the commission, and from public input. Those four are capacity, resource allocation, and class sizes, student well-being, and social emotional needs, transportation, and neighborhood schools. Financial impact, which came from public input, has been put under cost effectiveness because of the two align well. So those are the two board priorities and the four community considerations that we've used. On the next slide, to create a rubric. This is a rubric that's been created directly from commission input, with the two board priorities and the four community considerations. We use this rubric to help us, uh, study our redistricting scenarios. And I'll talk more about that in a few, uh, subsequent slides. In addition to using the rubric, we've asked our commission members to provide additional feedback, um, as they evaluate these redistricting scenarios. Additional feedback we've asked for, what are some strengths of these scenarios? What are concerns they have about the scenarios we presented to them? And what additional comments they have about these scenarios? In addition to, uh, as they're using the rubric and they're studying these, uh, redistricting scenarios, we've provided them feedback to help them fill out these rubrics. Data we've included includes the percentage of free lunch, free and reduced lunch students at each school as they are right now and as they would be on the current scenario that they're studying. We include the, uh, percentage of students changing zone schools or getting reassigned. We include the utilization rate of as it is now, and also, uh, as compared to the redistricting scenario that they're currently looking at. So they have that direct comparison. And we also include data about proximity of residents to school under each scenario for evaluation. So looking at the first redistricting scenarios we looked at, this was from the May twenty-eighth meeting. We looked at maps from Business Information Services from our demographer. The three that we included in our, for evaluation by our commission members were the scenarios he presented. Scenario eight, which was balancing capacity levels. Scenario nine, which he included having childs being closed. And scenario ten, which was his attempt to balance free and reduced lunch percentages across our corporation. We also included three maps from our own data team in our attempts to balance SES and create redistricting scenarios. As, we have titled them SES one, SES two, and SES three. Those were just three different attempts by our own team to try different ways to try to balance SES across the corporation. And finally, we included thirteen maps. We had one map, one redistricting scenario, where we had each different elementary school and MCCSC close as part of that scenario. Now, we have fourteen elementary schools. It's thirteen because we included Rogers and Binford as the same scenario. So we included one redistricting scenario for each of our different schools being closed, which led to a total of nineteen maps to be studied by our commission members. Probably a good time to point out my, my gratitude, uh, to our commission members. They've, this is, uh, this was our fourth meeting. I'll be talking about the fifth meeting later. They've been great partners, um, they've offered so much, so much valuable feedback. And, uh, I hope they see, and I think they see, that the work that we are doing is really driven from their input and their ideas. And I really appreciate their continued work and their input. Looking to Phase Two maps that we studied on June twenty-fifth. We returned to the three maps that I highlighted on the last slide from our demographer. We had additional data to include, so we wanted to make sure that we were able to have our commission members evaluate those three scenarios with all the available data that they needed. We also included seven different scenarios with two schools closed. This was based on commission, uh, feedback and commission requests. We had multiple requests to include redistricting scenarios, which included that. So in, in light of their request, we brought that to the commission on June twenty-fifth. We used criteria to determine which scenarios we wanted to include. While we were able to include scenarios in Phase One where we had every single, uh, elementary school included in a scenario, it would be difficult to include all the different iterations of two different schools being closed. So we used criteria to determine which seven maps we wanted, uh, which, two seven redistricting scenarios we wanted to bring to them. That scenario, those, excuse me, that criteria included current enrollment in those buildings, as well as projected enrollment over what it would be in five years or ten years, based on the data provided by, to us by our demographer. We also, another additional criteria was current utilization rates, as well as projected utilization rates at five and ten years, again, from our demographer. We included, another criteria was building capacity. We included a criteria of proximity of, of schools. We didn't want to include scenarios to the commission where it had one school potentially being closed with another one that was very closely next to it. That didn't make a lot of sense in terms of being, using our time wisely. And we also included the criteria of school programming. So those were the five different sets of criteria that we used to determine which seven maps to bring to the commission for, uh, for review and evaluation and for consideration. Talking about next steps, as we continue to have our, uh, commission members, uh, review redistricting scenarios for our study, September seventeenth. It's a little while from now, but it's gonna give us the time we need to make continued attempts to refine our maps. While our maps, you know, I talked about how we had nineteen maps at one meeting, this will allow us to take three maps and take the, the maps that have scored the highest and really give all our attention to creating the best maps we can that attempt to balance SES across our school corporation with no schools closed. We would like to have a meeting in October twenty-second with commission members. I highlighted the thirteen different maps we highlighted, uh, that we had with, with single school closures. This again will be a chance for us to bring maps for the, uh, to include redistricting scenarios that have one school closed while we're simultaneously trying to balance SES. And we'll take the maps that scored high from the first phase and include those, um, this time we'll be able to, again, instead of focusing on those thirteen maps, we'll be able to take the three and really focus on every single aspect of the maps we can to make them the very best scenarios that we can create. And then finally, on November fifth, we would like to, uh, take, uh, of the seven maps we included in Phase Two, we'd like to continue studying the three that, that, uh, the commission members give the most positive feedback about, including with their rubric scores, and create the very best versions we can of those with, um, two school closures and balancing SES. Finally, I'd like to conclude with the importance of reminding of our board priorities of balancing socioeconomic status and cost effectiveness, along with, um, the important input we've got from our public, which has created, uh, four community considerations. And I've, uh, included the question again from commission members about, given the current financial landscape, should cost effectiveness be our top priority? At that point, I'd like to see if there's any questions I can answer about the Redistricting Study Commission.
So, uh, my first question is, um, in one of the, I think, commission and publicly added, there were four, I don't know how you titled them, four priorities or four considerations. One of those was neighborhood schools. I wonder if you could tell me more about how that overlaps with our priorities of cost effectiveness and socioeconomic balance?
Sure. Um, I'll go back to that on the previous slide. So that is, this is, um, directly driven from, uh, a public survey that we put out, answering questions about what should be our important considerations as we are studying redistricting scenarios. And we gathered feedback from the community, and we put it through a coding process, and I think I briefly talked about it at a previous meeting. And then we, we came up with ten different considerations from the public input. And then the, we asked the commission members to select which five they thought would be the most important for us to put to the top for our, as we considered redistricting scenarios. So neighborhood schools kind of came out of directly of that coding. I will add, I, I've used the original language, but as we've done this work, we've had a lot of discussion with commission members about expanding the definition of that to maybe include more community schools, or, because we want to, to expand the definition of what a neighborhood means. And from my understanding and talking with commission members and from input and looking at the data that we had in the coding process... a lot of that, that consideration was in us wanting to consider keeping communities and neighborhoods together as much as possible while, while we were considering redistricting scenarios and the importance of that. That came out in a lot of public input about that was something they wanted us to consider.
Can I piggyback on that for a second? Do we know, and if you don't, that's okay, that initial study, the one that went out to the community or the survey, do you know how many people responded to that?
333.
Okay. I always like to know something.
I have a question.
Does she have a question?
Tim, can you repeat the question?
Yes, yes. The question was, you know, what, what is the socioeconomic balance of the commission itself? I don't know if I have, you know, the, that particular data, but I do know that we have representation from all our schools. That was something we wanted to make sure that we had. It was an open process where any community member could be part of the process. And we, we did want to ensure that we had representation for every single one of our schools, which we do. We have students, parents, community members, some former parents on the commission.
Educators.
Educators, yes.
My other question was, so I noticed that it doesn't seem like any of the maps included the possibility of merging two schools, which obviously was something that we spent some time discussing previously. Has that been taken off the table altogether at this point?
Well, I would say our work has just been guided by the board priorities of redistricting. So we hadn't defined a redistricting, we hadn't included merger in that scope, but you know, that's, again, this is, this is an evolving process and we see our work as a commission. We are studying scenarios, multiple, obviously we've highlighted two different phases and the phases will continue. And then our, our end result will be to provide the summary of all the things that we've studied and the associated data and the associated information that we're able to gather from commission members at the, with a, kind of a concluding report as kind of the end process when, when the time is right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so, and you know, I was trying to take notes as we were talking too, like I was in the classroom. And I might've missed something, but you gave different scenarios with eliminating different elementary schools, but you mentioned Binford, Rogers and Childs as the two. Have you, did you go through every scenario or every school eliminated?
We did, yes. I think the point I was trying to make there is that we have 14 elementary schools. On my slide, I said 13. And that was, you know, we considered a scenario where we would have Childs closed, Templeton, Island Park. And each, each of those different scenarios. For the one where we included Rogers, Binford, we included them together on one scenario. That's why we had 13 scenarios with a single school closure instead of 14, if that makes sense.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I mean, I got one more just for my sake. So on the considerations, you said five, but I only see four bullet points. Did you combine one?
Yes, yes. Thank you for pointing that out. Financial impact was one of our communities that came out through public input.
Oh, okay.
And there was a lot of feedback from commission members. Why do we have cost effectiveness and financial impact? They seem like the same thing. So based on their input and really their request, we put financial impact under the board priority of cost effectiveness.
Thank you.
I heard you say that, you moved it up, but then I also forgot it when you said later, so that makes sense. Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I thank you for your work so far too. I don't know if I'm just, I drink a lot of caffeine today. It's really good. I'd really like to report.
Well, this gives me an opportunity to thank again all our commission members. We, we have 92 commission members now. They can't all make it every night because we know it's, you know, an evening commitment, but I cannot thank the commission members enough for their, for their input and their time.
I mean, that is a great deal of community support, I think, and engagement. And we always love to see that, you know, and that was what we hoped for. So I'm really glad that that many people took the time to fill out the application. I really do thank them for all of their work and for their diligence in doing this, this stuff alongside you all. So yes, thank you so much for leading that work. One more?
Well, I don't have additional questions, but I, if I recall, if I understood correctly, I think that the commission had asked us to discuss further our priorities, especially sort of the order of balancing socioeconomic status and cost effectiveness. I think I said this when Dr. Dowling brought it to us a couple of months ago. From my perspective, I don't, I don't remember having ordered them necessarily. I still think that they're both important priorities. I'm glad that the commission and Dr. Dowling have continued to consider both of those things. And that, that's how I would like to see it continue unless you feel as though it's necessary to say one is higher, one is a higher priority than the other.
I thought it was important to bring the commission's input to the board. I felt like that was my role to bring their feedback and what they've been saying to you. So I appreciate that discussion.
And, and we can have that discussion, so it's open, it's an open topic at this point. So if there are any thoughts or considerations on behalf of board members about those two items and how they're ordered or whether they're ordered, now's the time to have that, at least at this moment, not that we can't ever have it again.
I agree with what Erin said. I mean, I wasn't here when you all put those priorities, so I don't know if those would have been my priorities at first anyhow. I wasn't on the board then, but I, I gather that you made that decision looking at the landscape. But I think that's an important question, given our current financial landscape. So I think it may shift depending on what's happening. So that's what I would say.
This is actually one of the things that Preston Smith, who ran the dem, the demographic, the demographic study, he actually did bring this up and he said, you might get very different results based on how you order your priorities. So for instance, if you were to talk about capacity and to fix for capacity, because some schools are at, you know, 95% and some are at 75%, you're going to get a very different outcome from that than if you are balancing for socioeconomic status and for your reduced lunch, right? The way you move kids will look differently. And so it can have a, a big impact, right? It might be the decision, and I'm not saying that there is a decision on the table. I'm saying it could be the difference between closing a school, closing two schools or closing no schools and simply moving children around, right? And so the cost effectiveness question and financial impact could greatly influence the outcome. And it may not end up being what our original purpose was, I think, when we started this, which was to balance socioeconomic status. And I think that's still very important to me. I know it is to you. I know it is to many people on this board still. And, you know, the landscape has changed. And I don't know what that means, but I do think that we should continue to look at both of them from my perspective as well.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. I, I, I do believe that, at least as a start off point, that the priorities are kind of equal for me. And like, you know, I wasn't on the board when the priorities were chosen, so.
April, you, I mean, sorry, Asia, you had a talk in the mic.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yep, you're good. I know, it takes a while because it's really loud in the room, right? But people online have a hard time hearing sometimes. Yeah. Other comments? Questions?
I just want to say thank you to the board for beginning to engage in that conversation because when it was prioritized, socioeconomic status was indicated as the top priority. Secondary to that was cost effectiveness. And so I, I do think that with the changing landscape and all of the things that are happening at the federal level, at the state level and locally, the feedback that you can provide to, to the administration and ultimately to the commission will be very valuable to help us in bringing forward information for your final consideration and, and decision making. So I think that's just an important piece and I do appreciate your willingness to, to begin to engage in that. There's a lot of grappling that's going to be necessary as we tackle both of those, those issues because it's quite possible that one could be accomplished to the exclusion of the other. And so that's why the commission is continuing and repeatedly bringing that question to Dr. Dowling. And that's why he's bringing it to, to this group, to the trustees for additional guidance and direction. So I just want to say thank you for beginning to grapple with that. We will continue to, to bring that forward for more conversation and more dialogue. And I just want to say to Dr. Dowling, thank you so much for your leadership and your guidance and your attention to, to the details regarding this very, very important priority. It's ultimately going to make a, a big difference for our corporation and just the ongoing engagement of over 90 members of our community. This is not easy work. We hear from them each time they come together that, wow, we don't envy you. You have a hard job. And I think there's a, a greater degree of appreciation for the complexities and the complex nature of this work. So I just want you to know that I'm so very grateful for your leadership.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Winston. Next is our corporation discussion in MCCSC. We will begin with an overview presentation, Dr. Winston.
Yes. I'd like to ask Ms. Harmon to come to the podium as I just share a few remarks. For many years, MCCSC has actively and collaboratively and happily engaged in corporation and building level discussion with MCEA in an effort to listen and to learn from our teachers on numerous topics that impact our school days. Throughout the years, we've had productive conversations on many of some of the most challenging topics and aspects of teacher, teaching and learning. It's also important to note that MCEA has recently requested the development of a RIF policy, a reduction in force policy. And this is also an opportunity for the administration to provide an overview of how we currently engage with MCEA. Tonight's presentation is designed to share some vital and important information about how MCCSC and MCEA meaningfully discuss topics, numerous topics and issues that impact their daily work. In addition, tonight's presentation is in response to the board's explicit request to provide an opportunity for a candid board discussion about the MCEA's recent request for the board to consider the development of a RIF policy. To that end, Mrs. Harmon, who is my designee, the administration's designee to MCEA, will provide a clear and comprehensive overview of how this process has worked over the years and how it is working currently and what our go-forward decision-making process has been. So, Mrs. Harmon?
Thank you, Dr. Winston, and thank you, President Hennessy and members of the board, for allowing me to present on this really important topic tonight. So an overview of what corporation discussion looks like in MCCSC. So I always, this is the teacher in me, right? I'm going to start out with an agenda. Here's what I want to kind of cover with you. I want to talk a little bit about Indiana legislation and discussion requirements because that's the foundation, or it was, of what we would do. Kind of the history of discussion in MCCSC, our current discussion procedures. And then finally, to talk about the factors for future staffing and decision-making discussion that has occurred the previous school year in '24, '25. So to start, prior to July 1st, 2023, Indiana Code defined discussion as the performance of mutual obligation of the school corporation through its superintendent and the exclusive representative to meet at reasonable times to discuss, provide meaningful input and exchange points of views. And as Dr. Winston noted, the exclusive representative is myself, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So that's the definition that was given to us prior to July 1st. However, on May 4th, 2023, Senate Enrolled Act 486 that went into effect on then July 1st, removed the requirement to discuss certain items. It also provided that a school employer may discuss any topic that significantly impacts the certificated employee's working conditions or impacts the educational quality of the school employer's students. That "may" is emphasized here because that, it removes the requirement to discuss. It just allows us to do so. And it repeals provisions concerning requirements regarding the adoption of evaluation plans, obligation to discuss certain items which are mentioned, and that definition that I just read to you of what discussion is as well. So those kind of go away in law. To kind of give you a timeline of what discussion looked like and then how that impacted us as well, to kind of focus on some specifics, here's a timeline. Discussion in MCCSC happened way before August 2022 as well. It's been in place for a, a number of years. But highlighting very specific here are some things that, to show that. So in August of 2022, MCCSC administration drafted, drafted formal discussion procedures. This is an important document for the work that we do, so I wanted to highlight that here. And I'm going to talk a bit more about it as we go forward. That document was discussed as well with MCEA. We, we wouldn't want to create discussion procedures that we didn't get meaningful input about from our, our MCEA partners. So that was important. We talked about that in the fall of 2022. In July of 2023, as I mentioned, SEA 486 goes into effect. It repeals a lot of the law that was the foundation for those formal discussion procedures. But we maintain those discussion procedures after that law went into effect. We know how important discussion is to the work that we do. We want to make sure, especially as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, the feedback that teachers provide is essential to the work that I do. And so we kept that in place. MCCSC established a collaboration plan with MCC, MCEA. I'm sorry, there's just a lot of MCCSCs. In August of 2023, that was, I'm here. And then that was followed, as you all know, in April 2024, with our MCCSC board adopts the Bylaw 0135, which is board policy to have discussion. And as far as we know, we may be the only school corporation in Indiana that has a board policy for discussion. And we think that's really valuable and pretty cool. So that's important. Going from that, I mentioned both of these documents in that timeline. The collaboration plan and the board bylaws are essential to the discussion in MCCSC and the work that we do. So I've highlighted some language that really guides what we do. From our collaboration plan, in that we established, despite the legislature removing the legal obligations, MCCSC remains committed to a collaborative approach with MCEA. We continue to meet with MCEA to receive meaningful input and exchange points of view to support our educators and better serve our students. And then, as you are aware in the bylaw, the school corporation shall meet and confer with exclusive representative in good faith at reasonable times and reasonable places to discuss teacher working conditions and student learning conditions, except to the extent that such issues are subject to collective bargaining pursuant to Indiana law. So looking at what those formal discussion procedures look like in practice between MCCSC and MCEA, MCCSC administration, myself and the MCEA president have weekly meetings open, to kind of have open communication, problem solving on any kind of items that arise that are of concern or issues. And we also during that time collaboratively develop the corporation level discussion council agenda. In how we do that agenda is we have a monthly discussion planning organizer that we can both add items to. We review those items, agree and collaborate on what topics will be discussed. We establish how much time we're going to allot to an item. And we finalize that agenda 24 to 48 hours before the meeting. And then, of course, if there is a need for last minute additions, we just mutually agree to that and do so. These are the allowable topics that we have agreed upon with MCEA. These actually come from Indiana Code prior to SEA 486. They were in that legislation and so, so we kept them. It is extensive list. I'll give you a second to look at it, but I'll just highlight that all of these bullets as a whole, kind of collectively, address curriculum, instruction, assessment, safety, hiring, evaluation and training. I'll give you a minute. The language in the yellow bar is what replaced this allowable topic with the July one, with SEA 486. So now it's Indiana Code, any topic that significantly impacts a certificated employee's working conditions or impacts the educational quality of the school employer's students. We have maintained the full list below. We have five formats for discussion. Along the top in the blue is corporate level discussion, which I already mentioned in terms of some of the work I'm doing on a regular basis with our MCEA president. This discussion focuses on items that impact multiple buildings. There are, it's the second Wednesday monthly. It's chaired by myself. I have appointed six administrators to be on the team and the MCEA president appoints six MCEA members. And we co-create that agenda. And again, this is really important, essential work. Anything that we're doing as a curriculum office, we want that feedback and this discussion allows us to have that. We also have the equivalent at the building level, so the building level discussion, those, those are items that are specific to a building. They're monthly as well, or if needed, more frequent. The agenda is co-created by that building administrator and their MCEA building representative. We have an evaluation oversight committee that's separate. That are items that are specific. We have an evaluation oversight committee that's separate. That are items that are specific to teacher evaluation. They meet monthly. It's chaired by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Operations, Dr. Henderson. He creates that agenda with our MCEA president, Jenny, and those are where those items are addressed. We also have instructional technology discussion, so a place for items that are related to technology. They meet a little less frequently, quarterly. They're chaired by the Director of Technology, Andy Ko. The agenda is co-created between him and the MCEA president and Jenny. And we have our special education case manager collaboration, items that are related to special education, quarterly, chaired by Directors of Special Education. And the agenda, again, is co-created between the Directors of Special Education and the MCEA president. These five formats for discussion are extensive because we want those, that feedback and that those discussion opportunities to address the items in these areas, so it's really been useful in the work that we do, and we value it. When we take a look then at discussion of factors for future staffing decision-making in terms of the twenty-four, the discussion that we had last year, looking forward to twenty-five, twenty-six, sorry, went too far. Kind of prompted by our two-year strategy to achieve balance that was in February, I began exploring the development of factors to consider in the event of potential position elimination due to the state of our finances. Our administration knew that we would wanna kind of think about how, what should impact that discussion, that decision. We reviewed historical and current legal requirements and practices, and after we had gathered some of that information, we decided to initiate that conversation with MCEA as well to discuss those factors and think about what could be considered in making future staffing decision-making. That happens in March and April. We also had a conversation with our building principals, cuz they're essential to that discussion as well, thinking about what should those potential factors be and how do we make these decisions. We then brought, facilitated a first formal discussion at corporate-level discussion in April of twenty-twenty-five and a second formal discussion of potential factors at corporate-level discussion in May. Through that work, we created, our administration created, the Administrative Guidelines for Reduction in Force and Transfer, which then guided our decisions over staffing this summer as we look towards the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is, that's what I have. I hope this has been informative, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. I think it's really helpful, especially because we do have some newer members on the board. So getting that information refreshed is great. I really appreciate it. And now's the time for discussion. We, as Dr. Winston said, the MCEA has officially asked us for a RIF policy, a reduction in force policy. And so we need to at least have a discussion right now about what does that look like and what do we think about that? And where do we think that decision might lie or lay? I'm an English teacher, and I just had a moment where I was like, I don't know, lie or lay, lay, anyway. So, initial thoughts?
I think Asia spent more time thinking about this than me.
Did you wanna start?
Well, I'd just like to say that I came into this process as it was being, like, rolled out, and the amount of thought and care that I've seen our administration take in this process has been amazing, and it was like eye-opening. And I really appreciate your presentation, cuz I learned even more about all the moving parts to making these decisions. I understand the request, but I also understand our current landscape and I'm just, I'm just torn on, like, timing right now because everything is kind of up in the air as far as finances go.
Yeah. And, and I will say, as I understand it, the administration and the MCEA, and I am not speaking for either party. I am just saying, as I understand it, there is at least some alignment on the criteria as it's been discussed. I think there's perhaps, where the, it's not misalignment, but where the sort of, maybe there's some question about ordering, about which way things are ordered of those criteria. At least that's what I understood. And I think there is just also a desire to have a policy that firmly or explicitly binds the MCCSC to following a particular order.
I wanted to confirm that, that's my understanding too, is not so much that there's a huge difference between the guidelines that have been agreed upon and what's in the policy that MCEA is asking for. I think, as to my understanding, the difference is, is that the guidelines are not something that the board has approved and would be binding or actionable, but a policy would be. So I can understand why MCEA is asking for a policy. It would be, it would be more concrete, for lack of a better word. Ms. Harmon, do you see, can, do you see a major difference between the guidelines that you have agreed to with MCEA and the policy that they've asked for? I, I don't know. I wouldn't want to speak for MCEA. I don't see a major difference. I think the items are the same. You're correct that our administrative guidelines are not prioritized, the factors on them are not, they do not have a priority. Okay, so that's another difference then, that there's a priority in the policy they've asked for.
Oh, yes. I think in the policy they've asked for, it seemed very clear to me that there was a priority of those items. Also understanding that there are also legal criteria, right? So it's like someone beyond blank year can't be, you know, and then it's like, so there are these criteria that also must be followed. And so, there's like the legal criteria, there is the administrative prioritization that they've created, not prioritization, but guidelines. And then there was the prioritization that the MCEA explicitly asked for in the policy. So there are kind of like multiple moving parts there, I think, that are on the table for consideration in this discussion.
Sorry, so I think the, the threshold question is, as a board, are we willing to consider passing a policy?
Yeah, and I, do, this is a question that we might not have an answer to right now, but do we know the last time the MCCSC had to do reduction in force? Was it in the early ninety, nineties or two thousand? No, we don't know.
There was a reduction in force, and I don't wanna quote the year because I would maybe get it wrong, but I think it was later than that. I wouldn't wanna quote the year. I would probably pose that question to our attorney, Tom Bunker, if he can recall that, who's on the line? He shook his head no.
I heard the question. Unfortunately, I, it's been a long time. That doesn't give you a date, but it hasn't happened for a long time.
Dr. Henderson, would you like to speak to that?
If my recollection serves, I believe it was prior to the first referendum was the last time that we had a reduction in force.
That would have been like two thousand seven or six, yeah, okay. And to the knowledge of the parties involved, have we ever had a reduction in force policy in this district?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge.
Mr. Bunker, can you tell me from a standpoint of maybe the state landscape legally, do we know, are there similar reduction in force policies across the state?
I can't speak to individual corporations. It, it clear, there clearly is a statutory process, a timing process, a notice requirement process that is, that is in the statute. And I, I think most people would say they follow the statute. I'm not aware of a specific policy that's been adopted to do that other than to make sure that you follow what the statute says if you intend to take a reduction in force. And it's, the statute's got dates, times, and a process involved in it.
Right, right. Okay, so that essentially, maybe a board or boards might have policies that explicitly state that they would follow the statutes of law, but that is essentially just saying, we will follow the law. Questions?
I mean, thank you, Ms. Harmon, for your presentation, by the way. And I learned a lot by listening to it. So from my understanding, MCCSC is in constant communication with MCEA beyond what the requirements are by the state? Is that what you said at the beginning? Like, cuz there's a new law, right?
Yes, we are not, right.
Okay, so in my mind, I'm like, okay, and then just hearing, I was about to call him Dr. Bunker, but our lawyer, Mr. Bunker there. If we're following the law when we're talking about having these conversations, then I think we're doing due diligence. So I don't think a policy, in my mind right now, I mean, just speaking for Tiana, I don't think a policy should be in place if we're having these constant conversations, and it seemed like you mentioned every area in the administration is having conversations with MCEA and you and your, whoever you designate. I mean, there was a lot going on there, those six people, and those six people, all those. That's what I would say.
Just to kind of echo what Asia said and what Tiana has said. I, I certainly understand the reasoning behind the ask. It's a very uncertain time, and I can definitely appreciate wanting to have some sort of reassurance or some, something concrete. But as we've also been discussing, it is such a weird, uncertain time that, and given the history of the longstanding relationship between administration, MCEA, and the board's commitment to have a policy on discussion, I kind of am feeling what, similarly to what Tiana said about maybe the, the need for the, the actual policy main, you know, it's, it's just, is, is it needed? Because there could be drawbacks when we get into situations where we need a little bit more flexibility. When I say we, I mean administration, not us, but, yeah, so I, it's, it's certainly a, cuz I, I certainly support the teachers, and I, I completely understand why they're asking for it. But I also trust Dr. Winston and her team.
And I think, I will say, from my perspective, and thank you all for your comments and thoughtfulness. I've even heard, you know, Jenny say, it's not about trust with the administration. I think they greatly appreciate the, the relationship and trust the administration. I think everybody's just, it's a tenuous moment, right? Everybody's nervous. Everybody wants the most security that they can get out of every single, like, piece of security or like place that might be threatened in their, in their immediate future. I've sort of wrestled with this a lot, but I will say that from my part, at this moment, it feels a little to me like an overreach of, of our authority as a board in some ways. We don't make the hiring and firing decisions for corporation employees. Yes, we are a policymaking board. It is true that we set policy and that our job is to set policy. And that we do often set policy that is required by state or legal statute. And that we have in moments directed the corporation to behave in a particular way when those legal statutes disappear. But to bind our administration or our superintendent's hands and say that we are going to dictate the way essentially that they can make decisions does feel, and we do this all the time, where we are talking about, I think, educating, you know, what is the extent of our sort of authority or power or provisions in our, in our role. I could be wrong, but I do think that that is aligned at, at the moment. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, it feels legally conflicting and also ethically conflicting for me as I weigh the potential for a policy that would say how the administration would make decisions about, you know, any, any kind of staffing decision in that way.
And initially, when I first read it, when it was brought to us before, I was like, wait a minute, that's Dr. Winston's role. Like with her, she's in charge of the administration. We support her and supervise her, but we're not hiring and firing teachers. That's not our role. So I agree with what you said. That was my initial thought. But then hearing this, I was like, well, we're already collaborating with MCEA very well, then those conversations could happen still that way.
Asia, any thoughts? Any other thoughts?
I mean, for the most part, I agree with the rest of the board. It would kind of put some undue, like, restraints on the administration in a very, like, in a time that we are all, like, going into blindly. And I don't think that would be a wise decision.
I mean, I think the law, the statute, and I'm just trying to think back to all of the, the documents we received, does say that there are issues with making decisions based on seniority in certain cases or events. And so, you know, having seen the list of guidelines or priorities that would guide a decision like that, it, they looked very, I, I, they look reasonable to me. They look like things that would be in any sort of decision-making process about this, right? Things about job performance, about, you know, I'm trying to think back to all, that, that whole list of things. But they were all things that would or typically should be considered in a decision like this.
I'm, I'm, honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm torn on this one. I, and I know that that's ironic because I've been uninclined to bind us in the past. I don't wanna pretend like I don't understand the difference between the security of a requirement to discuss and the security of a requirement to follow a specific policy. I do, and I can understand why, why MCEA wants a policy beyond discussion. And, and I don't think that it's wholesale a bad idea. It might be bad timing. And if I didn't feel like we had such trust between the administration and our certified staff and the board, I think I would be more inclined to say that we need a written policy. I, I, I don't know if it's overstepping our role to set a policy that is, that has general priorities for this kind of thing. But it also seems to me as though if I wanted a policy, I would be an outlier on the board. And, and I am, I am persuaded by the things that, that the other board members have said in terms of, in terms of why, why we're, why we might be hesitant to, to adopt that at this time.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, we obviously have two board members who aren't here, and we haven't heard from them, right? I have heard from them cursorily, just, you know, in other moments when we've had this discussion at this table initially. And so, I, I know where they stood at that moment. I don't know where they stand at this moment. I do think that the board is likely leaning one way. And it is complex, you know? I think, even as I read the policy that was presented and written to us, I did have some questions because it seemed to conflict in certain points with legal statute or standard. And so I did directly ask the lawyer about that. And so I think that the policy, as it was given to us, did conflict or seemed to conflict as it was read with legal statute or, or, or law, right? And so, that to me was just, I don't, I don't really know how, I think, even if there were a policy, it would have to be revised or rewritten to ensure that we do not, you know, overstep in that way.
I agree with that. I think, again, for me, the threshold question was, for me, would I support a policy in general? The, the specifics of the policy that we were presented with, and I think would need to be, would need to be revisited if we were willing to explore a policy. But as a threshold question, yeah, that, that was kind of what I was thinking about today. But as a threshold question, yeah, that, that was kind of what I was thinking about to begin with.
Yeah. I mean, it's true that I too wouldn't be, I, I wouldn't, I don't think that us passing a policy oversteps. I think us passing a policy that is explicitly written that may overstep in a particular way does concern me. And so, the policy itself isn't the issue. It's the way I think that the policy is drafted at this moment. That is the issue for me, and I wouldn't feel comfortable passing that particular policy. So I guess if we're talking about specifically the policy that we're given by MCEA, I am not comfortable passing that particular policy.
Okay, that's helpful to understand.
Yeah, that's what I agree with.
Okay, sorry. I'm glad I clarified. There are no actions for us to take tonight unless...
I'm not gonna make a motion.
Okay, all right. I'm just making sure that there's no one here who feels the need to make a motion at this moment. There is no action for us to take at this moment. I think that we've had this discussion. As always, discussions can come back at the table if something changes. And any other comments or questions before we close this discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Harmon, for presenting that again.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I wanna thank the board for your contributions and your insights to this discussion. And we will now move on to comments and committee reports. Does the board have any comments or reports that you would like to share? Do not think that we've had many committees in action in the past month or two, so. Okay, and finally, Dr. Winston, do you have any additional information to share with us tonight?
I do. I, I wanna talk about just two things very briefly. Our Referendum Impact Report. The Referendum Impact Report was shared at the May board meeting. We provided an overview of how the dollars that have been entrusted to MCCSC have been used to support the priorities that were communicated to the, to the community. And everyone that resides within our community should have received this Referendum Impact Report last week. You can also find this report on our website. The report covers the past two years and three months of referendum funding, approximately twenty-two point six million dollars that was invested each year across four areas. As a reminder, early learning, teachers and staff salary, curricular enrichment and student support, and student school supplies. How could we forget student school supplies, especially as we prepare to open a new school year? As a result of this funding, we have expanded student access to high-quality programs and services. Our pre-K student enrollment has more than doubled. We've waived testing fees for advanced placement, and career and technical education have removed a barrier for many of our families. Our students have benefited from an enriched curriculum through special programs like performing arts, as well as outdoor education. Teachers and staff received hourly and base salary increases. And families no longer need to worry about purchasing back-to-school supplies because the corporation provides them for free because of the generosity of our community. None of this would be possible without the continued backing of our community. We're deeply grateful for this support, not only of our schools, but also of the excellence within our schools, and we thank you. Twenty-five, twenty-six. My team is gearing up for another successful start to the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The first day for students is August sixth. We will provide families with more information in the coming weeks as we get closer to the opening of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Until then, be safe, enjoy these final days and weeks, and we'll see you back at school on August sixth.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, and with that, we are adjourned.